Good evening, everyone. I want to convene the town council meeting for February 4th, 2021. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is to review the minutes from past meetings. I have a couple of changes unless anybody else wants to go first. I have page five of seven, under item D, Centerville Police Department, year in review. Third bullet, Mr. McCluskey stated the town does not receive any revenues from speeding tickets on Commerce and Liberty Street. Can we just remove on Commerce and Liberty Street because we don't get money from anybody? Not just those specific roads. In addition, the next bullet down, it says, Mr. Hardy asked about additional speed cameras. Chief Sabory reported that a third speed camera will be installed in November. This is minutes from January, so I think it was, was installed in November or will be installed in the future?
The third camera will be installed this month.
February. Can you change that to February, Carolyn, please? And then finally, on the next page, I just found a spelling mistake. Director of Public Works, item C, under the sub-bullet, first sub-bullet is, there is no possible way a mater can speed up. It should be a meter. I was thinking back of that movie way back when. I don't have any other changes if anybody else wants to make a motion or any other changes.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from January 21st, 2021.
There are second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have a closed session statement to read. Closed session announcement regarding town council closed session, February 2nd, 2021. The town council met in closed session on Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021, at 7:01 PM with the Liberty Building, 107 North Liberty Street, second floor meeting room to discuss Section 3-305B, one, the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body had jurisdiction, or other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals in 3-305B2, to protect the privacy or reputation of individuals concerning a matter not related to public business in accordance with the Maryland Open Meetings Act. All five members of the town council voted to close the session. The authority to close the session is found in Section 3-305 of the General Provisions article. Town council discussed the following topics: Personnel and privacy of individuals; discussed performance evaluation of employees, appointees, and officials. Actions, no actions were taken. The following members and staff were present: Timothy E. McCluskey, President; Stephen K. Klein, Vice President; Robert R. Hardy Jr.; Jeffrey D. Keel; and Shelby C. Ananaya, Members; Steve Walls, Town Manager; and Sharon Van Enberg, Town Attorney. The meeting adjourned at 7:53 PM. Moving forward, we have Citizens Forum. Carolyn, can you read the announcement, please?
Welcome to this meeting of the Centerville Town Council. This is a public meeting and we welcome your participation. By attending, you acknowledge that this session is recorded and aired live on QACTV7. During the meeting, we ask that you turn your cellphones off and hold personal conversations outside the meeting room. The scheduled agenda is available on the information table just outside. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. The town council respects and appreciates your desire and right to convey your message freely, and in keeping with the dignity of proceedings, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner. Comments longer than three minutes should be submitted in writing. If questions are a part of your comments, we will refer those to the appropriate individual. Thank you.
I want to open up to Citizens Forum. If there's any citizens that have an interest in speaking, you've got three minutes. Please come forward, introduce yourself, and say where you live. We get any emails? Okay. All right, hearing none, we're going to move on to appearances. We will have a second Citizens Forum at the end of the meeting as well. First item of business is Centerville Police Department ceremonial swearing-in of the new officer Dustin Schultz. If my fellow council members would come down with me this evening as well to help with me, to help this. Chief, Dustin?
Close the door.
Once you guys come out, somebody come inside here and get a photo out of the room. Does that work? You know how this works. I've done this before. All right. So you're going to please raise your right hand, say aye, pronounce your name and phone number, if you have to make.
Aye, Dustin Schultz.
You solemnly affirm...
I solemnly affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful...
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance...
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and the laws thereof.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment...
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully...
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice...
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of...
Execute the office of.
Officer from the Centerville Police Department?
Officer from the Centerville Police Department.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state?
And laws of this state.
The town charter?
The town charter.
And laws and ordinances?
And laws and ordinances.
And the town senate?
And the town senate.
Cool. Thanks, girl. I'm taking. Thank you. Chief, you're up.
You just done one.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
We are going to put off, maybe just want to say, you know, we're so happy that you're here. Officer Schultz joins us as a lateral officer, lateral move for the Eastfield Police Department. We're so happy that you're here. If you want to say a few words or introduce your family or anything like that.
That's my father, right there. I appreciate everything that they have helped me with and helped me a lot to the attorney of the criminal officer and the transition here. I'm thankful they're here. I'm thankful to work in this town. And I hope I, you know, excel in the exceptional ways here. I love this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Right here, let's see if we can get a photo with Mr. Spinoza here. Can we get Joe there? All right. That's okay. He'll get his pretty face.
Thank you.
That's mom. Mom's got to get in there.
I know. Anything else you want to say or you want to?
Maybe you want to come on?
Yeah, absolutely. Come on, Joey.
Thank you.
We're getting our votes. Yeah. Proud, man.
Congratulations.
One with me and mine. Let's wait. Yeah.
Joey's big guy.
Well, Carolyn, can you get one with just that?
Get back the side.
Big words from Carolyn.
We all do.
Okay. There we go.
This one's for the scrapbook.
Okay, let me get. There we go.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure. All right, moving forward, next item on the appearance is Mary Margaret Revelle Goodwin, Maryland Women's Museum update. You're up.
Thank you.
Maybe you could, when you come up, Mary Margaret, you can introduce yourself and the board members that you have here.
Mary Margaret, I'm going to click the computer over here, so you tell me when you're ready.
What?
I'm going to click the computer over here, so you tell me.
Do you want me to just ask each time? Okay. Good evening and thank you for having us.
Good evening.
Let me introduce some of my board members. Mary Walker. Good evening. Doris Pullman, who is our secretary, and Ellen Norman. Ellen's in charge of the landscaping, which is turning out to be a bigger job than we thought. So we're going to talk about the Maryland Museum of Women's History, which is now at Locust Hill. So, next one. We were incorporated two years ago, in June 2018, and we are nonprofit, 501(c)(3), and I really love, I framed this letter from the IRS because when did you ever get a letter from the IRS that begins, "We are pleased to inform you," which was, I mean, I couldn't believe it. So, that's the underlying gift of being a nonprofit. Next one. So as soon as we started, within less than a year, we had not only applied for, but received $25,000 grant because we had a lease with the county with the idea of turning the big mansion called Bloomfield out in the county park just outside of town. We thought we would turn that into the museum. The problem is, first of all, that as you can see from the basement, there was a crack that went all the way to the roof. And we found, after we took the stucco off, many, many other cracks as well, and a problem with the chimney on that end of the house. So go to the next one, and that's the completely redone, repaired, on both corners, both the side and on the backside, all the way to the top, and we put a new chimney in. And we did it for under $50,000. We just turned in the report because the report was actually due on the 20, I mean, on the 31st of January this year, because it was actually a two-year grant in case we did not, in case we didn't finish everything as quickly as we did. I want to just make one other point. If you come off of that point of the house, and right there where the orange skirt is that comes off of that corner, that is where three little babies, Mary Edwardine Burke Emery's, three little ones, her son's, two of her son's children, and her father, I think, are buried there. We were very excited because we were gifted with a $13,000 day's worth of work with a ground-penetrating radar, and we could see the graves lined up, which is the kind of work that you do in historic preservation. Okay, next one. So in February and March, just a year ago, I was marching through the halls of both the delegates and the senators, going into every single one of the primary, not just our delegation, but, and not only for the Eastern Shore, because the Maryland Museum is a state museum. It's not going to be just county. So I was asking for a $150,000 bond bill. There were 271 applications. On the day, everybody, it's a madhouse, everybody gets there on one Saturday and makes their case, two minutes to make your case. I was number 271. And I had Steve Hershey beside me and Jeff Griss beside me, and stood up there in that room, had two minutes to speak, got it done in less, and go to the next one. So we came back, not knowing whether we would get the bond bill through or not, $150,000, and we were gifted from Earth Data here in Centerville with what amounted to $20,000 worth of free work to do all of the test holes around the area in case we would put in septic tanks. Go to the next one. And then the second issue, because the county had decided, without telling us before we did the septic work, that there wasn't going to be septic because they wanted, and I suspect they will still want, to hook up to the town sewer. So the second issue dealt with the easement lines. If you take any money from the state as a grant in historic work, you must give whatever the state draws as the lines around the property. So, the county initially started out with a very small piece, and it did not include any part of the road. And then the state came back and said, no, we want all of this area. And at that point, the county said, okay, we're not going to do any easements at all. The problem with saying, I'm not doing any easements, is unfortunately, the state says, okay, then you don't get any money. And we closed the grant. And that's what happened. Next slide. So we were forced to leave the county and leave the project. But before that happened, I actually received the $150,000. So when I left the county, I took the $150,000 with us because as a foundation, that's how we applied for the bond bill. We did not apply on behalf of the county. I asked for help, and they said, you don't have any chance of getting the money. But I had visited particularly all of the Women's Caucus, and last year, we awarded the Women's Caucus a major award, and we got our grant. But it's a long process because there are many, many rules when you take bond bill money. So we're in the process of doing that now. Next slide. So, in July, because the county really did want to abandon Bloomfield and the easements, we publicly announced that we were leaving Bloomfield, and we began looking for a house, actually even before the 17th. And the last day we were at Bloomfield, I came home on a Saturday, 11 o'clock in the morning. I remember it very clearly. Jack Ashley sent me a personal message saying, if you're interested in taking my house for the museum, call me. I called him right back and said yes. So, already, we have a new grant for work to do on Locust Hill. Next. So, in order to be sure that we could get this grant, Jack has already signed the easement agreement, because not a penny of money, and Jack has signed that already, and it's been done. And as you all are, I think, aware, I had a serious accident in October, had four-and-a-half-hour surgery. Against doctor's orders, I came home two days after the surgery and took place, took my place in a Zoom meeting and got the grant, which is a $25,000 grant, which is what we need for this particular project. Next slide. So, for those of you who do not know, Locust Hill, it's also known as Turpin Farm. However, it's been in the Turpin family since the War of 1812, when Thomas Baynard Turpin purchased that property. And all of that, but he had much more land actually outside and around, he had six plantations. So, the central point, that you see the green area in the middle of the brown fields, that is what would be called the campus of the museum. Includes four buildings. Next slide. So this is a little bit more of it up close. As you can see, it's an historic cemetery. Every single generation since the War of 1812 of Turpin family is buried in that cemetery. It is the best-preserved private cemetery here on the shore. And that's the house that will be the museum, and the little one there by the driveway, we'll talk about in a minute, then there's a shed, and then you see the solar array, and then you see the barn. Next slide. So there's the barn and the solar array, and you see this little, actually, it's a smokehouse, beautifully done, and the fire was lit only in one corner. Next slide. So if you have any kind of a public building, you've got to have the ADA handicapped access for both bathrooms and wheelchair access. So, that little smokehouse where you can do wheelies in a wheelchair, and we tested it out, that's what will be the ADA bathroom. Okay, next slide. So this is the main property, the main house. You all know about the history of Queen Anne's County Courthouse, but a portion of that house, which is within the area on the left of the screen, was the original room for the jury trials for the state of Maryland in Queen Anne's County in that house. So there's great significance, and we have the documents of how much Mary Nicholson, who owned it at the time, of how much she was paid. Next slide. So this is, somewhere within this room was the original part of where the jury trial was held. But the point about this photograph is, if you see in the far back corner, there's stairs. There is no way that you can do wheelchair access with those stairs. Next slide. And this is not the main exhibit room, but it is one of the exhibit rooms. And to the, right to the front right of the room, there's another set of stairs like the ones I just showed you. So, going from room to room, every one of those sets of stairs has to be fixed. And instead of doing it ramp style, which would cost a huge, long ramp going into the room and take up half of your room space, instead, there is a new system where the wheelchair comes up to the railings and is lowered down onto the floor of the next room. So, please go to the next slide. This is the main, main showroom for the exhibits, and it's also the room that we're going to be working in on a repair project that we have the grant for. And this is looking down towards Banjo Wayne from the back of the room. Next slide. Okay, so you can understand what it is we're doing. As a women's history museum, hosting, facilitating exhibits, convening conferences, meetings, and history presentations, the museum will host and facilitate ongoing research projects, and we work on the history of women, all across Maryland especially, but also, we've already presented some stories of remarkable, outstanding women from other parts of the United States. We also present our material in all those forms, audio, spoken word, photographic, electronic, theater, and so forth, which is where the barn comes into play, because we're going to turn the barn into a conference center. Okay, next slide. This is our website, marylandmuseumofwomenshistorywithouttheapostrophe.org, and you can find us very easily with all the information about the museum, board of directors, and, next slide. This is one of our exhibits. It's been up for a year already. It's, I think the link is on our main website, but it also has its own, and that's A-E-C-E-X, and that's annaella carol.org, or sorry, annaella caroexhibit.org. It's a very large, it's massive exhibit. Next slide. And this is the announcement, and we had hoped to have it up by the 15th of January, but it goes up next week. It's been very difficult because of my accident and recovery. I just don't get around quite as fast. Next slide. In that exhibit, you will find out about five plantations that surround all of Centerville. That's Locust Hill in 1886, but Poplar Grove, Bloomfield, Peace and Plenty, and Reed's Creek, and the stories, both of the owners and of the slaves, and the relationship. We just received a major donation of two of the original documents that were signed in that courthouse across the street and giving freedom to two different young black boys. One of them... In that exhibit, you will find out about five plantations that surround all of Centerville. That's Locust Hill in 1886. But Poplar Grove, Bloomfield, Peace and Plenty, and Reed's Creek. And the stories, both of the owners and of the slaves and the relationship. We just received a major donation of two of the original documents that were signed in that courthouse across the street and give, giving freedom to two different young black boys. One of them was on, came from Locust Hill. So it was like coming home. And his family has donated all the documents. So fragile because he carried them in his pocket 100% of the time. Otherwise, you could be sold back into slavery. Next slide. Oh, that's it. Okay. Any questions?
Council members?
I do, yeah. It's a great presentation.
Pardon?
It's a great presentation. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. Do you, how much do you think it costs to run this museum annually once?
How much, will it cost to what?
To run the museum annually, you think? What's the annual budget you have planned out?
To run them, in other words, to operate it?
Yep.
Right now, I can't tell you because when you do an exhibit, it depends on the size, it depends on the content, and you get sponsorship. That's how that is done. So there's two different parts to this museum. One is we have to do the upkeep of the property. And then the other is we have to do the exhibits. Right now, we can't do physical exhibits. And we cannot open until we get all of the handicapped work done. That's just, we've had a good discussion with the state fire marshal. So we do not have to put the showers in the ceiling. But what we do have to do is put fire escapes on both sides of the house. And we have a limit of how many people at any one time can be in the room. The estimate, if we had to put in the shower spray, over a million dollars. Not just because of the work, but the line bringing the water up from Banjo Wayne would not be enough. And in addition, we would have to go back and pay for all of the old, original plaster. And you have to have experts because it's a state-funded project. So.
Sure. Do you, do you have a long-term agreement with Jack Ashley to be there? I mean, you do?
Yes.
In writing?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Is, uh, I'm just trying to understand that Steve was maybe alluding, do you have a, what I would call a business plan?
I have, I have what?
A business plan.
Yes. Well, what we're doing, what we're doing is a two-year, five-year, and 10-year plan.
Is that available?
No, not yet. I mean, we've only gotten the house.
No, no. It's good to hear that you're planning to have that, is what I'm.
It will, we have announced it online on our website already, and it will be up for public comment.
Okay.
I mean, we're not, it's all, if you don't involve the public, that's why you have a museum to begin with, so.
Yes, Mary Margaret. I thank you.
You have to.
And I think that was one of our, in bringing you here to talk to us, is to provide an update since this is fairly.
Sorry, I, with a mask, it's hard for me to understand.
Okay. We thank you for, I thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Because we were looking forward to hear about your progress on this project since I know.
Well, we, we've always kept everybody apprised. On Facebook, we have, we've had, for two years, we've had our Facebook page. And everything is posted there as it is done or as it is about to be done with photographs and people asking questions and comments.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate that you're planning on putting together a two, five, and 10-year plan. Is that what I heard?
Just one more thing. We are in discussions with a major national museum to partner on a specific exhibit property. And that exhibit will take us two years to assemble, to research and assemble. And we are expecting at a minimum over 5,000 visitors in the first couple of months. It's that big a deal.
All right. All right. Thanks for coming in. Thank you all for, for coming here tonight. I really appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on to old business, 2021 fireworks. I think this is just a placeholder at this point.
Yes.
All right, we don't have any other, no other old business. We're going to move into new business. Resolution 01, 2021, Section 5 Personnel Manual Leave Donation. Uh, Steve, is this you or Crystal? All right. Good evening.
So included in the packets is the draft for Personnel Manual, Section 5, regarding forms of leave and the leave donation policy 300-102. And, you know, the town of Centerville recognizes that employees may have a family medical emergency or be affected by a major disaster resulting in a need for additional time off in excess of their available sick and personal time. The policy 300-102 and Personnel Manual Resolution 01-2021, included with this memo, were drafted to address this need. So we're just, I'm just looking for approval or any type of recommended amendments to these resolution, or to the resolution.
Okay. Anybody have questions or comments? I'll accept a motion to approve the resolution as presented if anybody's so moved. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve Resolution 01, 2021, a resolution of the Town Council of Centerville to amend the Town of Centerville Personnel Manual Rules and Regulations, Section 5 Governing the Operation, for the Town of Centerville to amend specific policies as it relates to leave. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? You got it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Proposal to upgrade, update the Town of Centerville Waste Water Treatment Plant Expansion Preliminary Engineering Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I have two agendas. Do we have six pieces of new business or five?
I've got five, A, B, C, D, E.
Okay. There was one here that is, goes through F. So I'm, I'm just, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
And clarify.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, just bringing tonight, a request to award an addendum to the existing contract for the preliminary engineering report from Whitman-Rickard. The original report was done in 2017. We kind of slowed down on this project, this project, just for the fact that we got very busy with other things, as you know, Commerce and Liberty Street, a few other infrastructure projects that were going on too. So we're getting back into this. Preliminary engineering report kind of puts our, it puts us ahead of the ball as far as reaching our 80% capacity management plan for MDE, which we'll start working on soon. But this is showing MDE that we've started a process and we're thinking forward to address additional needs for the water and waste, or for the wastewater treatment plant for the town. It's, as you can see, the, the price of the amendment to the contract, $14,920. And we're asking for your blessing on this tonight.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or make a motion to amend the existing contract?
I've got some questions.
Okay.
Sure. So if you could, so in 2017 or 18, WRA completed a study.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
To illustrate what it would cost to go to 750,000 gallons per day. Is that?
More or less. They started it in 2017. They were like 90% complete up until six months ago. And again, it was us. It wasn't Whitman-Rickard dragging their feet on this as far as updates and that type of thing. Yes, it gives you cost projections on what it's going to cost to get to your next step or what they would advise to be the next step. It gives an example of things that have to be done to get you to that point. It's informational. This is also used if we go to USDA or Maryland Department of the Environment for funding for such projects.
Funding for projects to expand the wastewater capacity.
Right. To expand it, sometimes it will even spin into projects to assist the wastewater treatment plant, whether it be studies, INI, studies, things in that nature.
And I was talking to Steve about this before the meeting, but how long, so this will take about two to three months to be done?
Yes.
How long would it be relevant?
This would be relevant for probably a two to three year, three years is probably pushing it.
So if, if we were to make a decision as a council to move forward with expanding the wastewater treatment facility within the next two years, we could use this new?
Absolutely.
But if we, but if we didn't make that decision, we'd have to do that again?
We would have to update it again.
Well, I guess the question I have got is, what's the rush?
The, the problem is if we let it last any longer, there'll be more to, there could be more to just updating what we have. We're just in a good place right now because a lot of legislation hasn't changed the way that this would work or anything. If you push it past three years this time, if things change, you're going to have to go to do a whole new preliminary engineering report. And the whole report is in the neighborhood of $30,000 to $50,000 if we go out to bid. That's about where the bids fell in line when we did it back in 2017. So it may even be, be quite a bit more than that.
I think the word rush is probably not, in my mind, not right. I think we're being, you're being prudent, I think, in moving this forward, especially in light of, I've had, fortunately had discussion with Steve just this afternoon about this. And it's been kind of one that you've been wanting to do. It was, I'll just say, delayed somewhat because of the large water and sewer project on Commerce and Liberty Street. We all know, has been briefed by Steve and during our orientation about the, and yourself, about we're near capacity on our wastewater treatment. And I, I think we got a physical sense when we visited all the sites. And I think it would, and I'll use the word again, we're prudent in moving forward on this to get, maybe not really ahead of the curve, but at least get the plan moving forward. And in light of other knowledge that both Steve and Tim and yourself have made us aware that there is a potential development, I mean, we're going to talk about one of them tonight, I think, in the business park. We know the YMCA is coming online. We know Turpin Farm has just been bought and will be developed or eventually in the near future. Mary Margaret, I think, is the first step. And Jack Ashley has also brought up to the planning commission about a storage facility. While that might need, not need water and wastewater treatment, I don't think Mr. Ashley is going to just sit by and, you know, I bought this big piece of property and not develop it. In addition, fairly recently, before we, Tim was here, Carter Farm is, and Tim made me aware, that there is a potential person looking to develop that. He's made you aware, correct? And Mr. Schultz, who was just here with his son, has brought to our attention, he has some ideas for developing. So I think this study is opportune, that we should move forward with it. It's prudent, which is wise and should be done because of all things that we see coming down the road. And that, in the past, because of circumstances sort of beyond our control, this was kind of put to the side or on the back burner. So I would support this because it's needed as a first step. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Very good.
When we started it back in 2017.
Yes, I, I know. And it got.
That was, we were ahead of the ball then.
Right.
Now we're dead center of the ball.
Right.
It's not like we're ahead of the game.
We're behind the ball.
Did you have any other questions? I want to make sure we get back to you.
No, no, that's fine.
Yes. I just want to make sure that, you know, he was asking questions.
I know.
We should allow him to just finish on his questions.
It's fine. So, so to Bob's point, this board of council members has, has some decisions to make, I think, about the investment that's going to be made in sewer and wastewater capacity. And so before we talk about prudent steps in a direction, I think we ought to try and talk about where we're headed.
That, that I understand. And I'll explain a little bit.
Yeah, by all means, no, I mean.
Okay.
I, I don't think it's a foregone conclusion. I mean, you tell me what it's going to cost to go to three quarters of a million gallons per day. What, what would it cost the town?
I have an idea in my head, but this report is going to tell you.
Wouldn't the one they've already done?
No. It has to be, the one that's already done had, has to be updated. That's what this.
Okay. What, what does this one say it's going to cost?
It doesn't say because until we make a decision to move forward with it and pay this, we don't have it updated.
So what did the, what did the other report tell us?
The other report told us that you were looking at probably 10 million, 10 to 12 million to upgrade the plant. That doesn't include, you need another farm, another spray irrigation facility, you need to expand the, the storage pond that you have now.
So, so before you go any further, Kip.
Yep.
So we're, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 18 million dollars.
If I, I will tell you right now, in my mind, I'm thinking 20 million.
20 million dollars. So for this, for this to make sense for us to do tonight, this board essentially has to agree to spend 20 million dollars in the next two years.
It doesn't, you have the choice, the, the council has the choice, okay, to say, no, we're not going to upgrade the plants.
Right.
We're going to stay where we are. That means the number of allocations that we have in reserve, which some of them are already given to the business park, some of them are allocated to other developments like that and everything. That's where we're going to stay. We're not going to allow.
Right, right. But I'm saying, so, so if, if we decide not to expand, then this, this is 15,000, I guess what I'm saying is, rather than spending this 15,000, you know, I think we ought to have some public hearings and gather some information about whether or not we want to expand the sewer, the sewer treatment plant.
Well, you're getting ahead of yourself. Because what I'm trying to explain is, once you get to the 80%, which you are required to do, the capacity management study, you have to come up with this report to, to document. you have to come up with this report to, to document this is where you could go if you wanted more capacity. It doesn't mean you have to, but it has to be done to be used with the capacity development and study for the council to make a, a firm decision. Are we going to stay where?
We have to do this, whether we want, whether we want to stay where we are or not, the Maryland Department of the Environment requires us to do this report.
They're asking, what are you going to do when you get to the hundred percent? It doesn't mean that you five council members have to make the decision, but it means that the Centerville Council has to tell MDE, what options do you have when you get to that hundred percent?
And, and communicating to them that we are going to retain our current allocation is not an option?
It is an option to tell them that, but the thing is, once you tell them that, don't expect to just roll in and say, okay, like the next people that take your seat, but they won't be able to say, my goodness, we've got this developer that wants to come in with entail limits, wants to buy allocations, we want to give them to them, but now we can't. And it's going to take five years to get to that point where they can give them allocations if they choose to move forward.
I, I understand that pretty, pretty acutely well.
I could add one thing, the, at the time this, this initial report was, was, the award was made, we weren't near the eighty percent. So what Kip was talking about, you know, we were ahead of the game. You know, now that our flows are approaching, you know, at the eighty percent mark, you know, MDE is going to want us to have some information as to, what are your options? So are you going to do anything further or are you not going to do anything? And this report will be something that we can provide them.
The, the report doesn't only tell you what to do to get to the next step, it tells you what you have to do if you choose to go to the next step, anywhere's down the road, which is what they're going to look for in that capacity development.
And I think one other thing I was going to add, when, when you mentioned something about public hearings, I think one of the benefits of completing the report is that if you, you know, have public hearings or meetings to, you know, solicit, you know, where, you know, the, the town wants to go related to expansion, well, without this information, you, you know, we don't have, we don't have numbers to share or anything, you know, we, all you're doing is going to the public and saying, well, do you want to expand or not? And they're like, well, what's it going to cost? Well, we don't have those numbers, other than just a ballpark number that Kip to share right now. But if we get the, you know, the report complete and show the options, then you do have information you can share that helps the public decide on the feedback.
Uh, just one council member, obviously, I'm, I'm generally concerned about, this is, has nothing to do with you, Kip.
No, no, no.
Generally, generally concerned about steps that create momentum around expanding the sewer plant becoming a foregone conclusion. So in other words, you've invested so much money in studies like this and this notion that, you know, because somebody wants to develop a farm or some other such thing, and you've invested so much money, well, of course, we have to expand the sewer treatment plant. And growth questions aside, you know, with seventeen million dollars in debt on the books right now, you know, that, that seems, that's something I would generally oppose. I mean, that's a lot of money. But that, that's what I'm pausing and thinking about here is, you know, are we going down a path where we spend a lot of money and it just forces the issue and takes the ability of this board or future boards to decide because the decision's made for us? And that's, that's the genesis of my questions.
I understand.
And I would also kind of put it. One other thing related to, you know, the money, I mean, even though, you know, the twelve million or seventeen, eighteen million number that's been thrown on the table tonight, you know, the one question we don't know is, you know, if there is an expansion that we would be going to upgrade it, you know, environmentally, production of waste. So the, so there is, you know, there's always been grant monies that's been available, you know, to help supplement the cost. Couldn't tell you, you know, what, what that may be, but that is just something else. It's not like the town may not bear the whole cost. You know, there may be some grants that might cover half of it, you know, we, we don't know.
Any of those grants would require a completed engineering report as well, right? And so I would say, you know, I would kind of put it on, on the, on the other spin on it, which is, if we don't spend the money to get this done, we're actually hamstringing a future council. Decision's already been made, right? You're not even going to be able to make the decision go or no-go. It's already, it's, it's a no, right? And, and so.
Yeah, but this can be completed in two to three months.
What's that?
This report can be completed in two to three months.
With the information that they have from the initial part, yes. I will tell you that it took them a year, a year to get the first draft of it. Another six months for us to go through that draft, back and forth with them. The six months is to update it to this.
Three months.
I'm sorry, three months, but if something happens and you choose not to do this, a little while down the road, you decide you need to, now you're back at starting that square one, so.
I, I mean, just not to belabor the point, but I think we're, in terms of tying people's hands, I mean, even a fresh report's only good for a couple of years. So we're not, there's no, there's no tying people's hands for five years from now if we don't do this today.
I do believe that this council is going to need to make decisions. This is going to be the one, so I think we need the information to know whether or not we want to do it.
Also, since this report has already been worked on and we've paid for it, to me, there's a certain, already sunk cost. We've already paid, how much for this report?
Nineteen.
I'm sorry?
Nineteen.
Nineteen? I thought the awarded bid was, maybe it was nineteen to twenty thousand.
Nineteen to twenty thousand. So to complete us, to bring us to, by understanding you, is to complete it, complete the report, which will bring us to a place where we will have the appropriate documentation, where we can then have the ability to have options, whether it's no, whether it's maybe seven hundred and fifty thousand, like you've talked to us when we, visited all the facilities, or if we're even looking further into the future, you know, a million, million and a half. And I go back to history, one of my fellow candidates talked about that he's been here forty years and the town, size of the town has doubled. I don't think you're going to stop progress in the town of Centerville. This town will expand, it will develop. It might not be in a year, it might not be in two, but it will. And for us today to just say, hey, I don't, I'm going to go thumbs down on a expenditure of fifteen thousand dollars to get a complete report to give us the town council the ability to make, I believe, an informed decision, is that correct? That spending this money now does not stop us, I think he's, Kip has said a couple of times, does not stop us from saying no, is that correct?
Correct.
Steve?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
So, Tim, thank you.
So let's, so, so I, I think we're at the point now where, you know, let's get a motion either to table or to move forward with it, does anybody want?
I ask one question though.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if we put this off, if we don't spend this fifteen thousand dollars, like, how much did you say it was going to cost if we had to do it again?
If you had to do it again? Carolyn just said that it was a little over nineteen.
Already nineteen.
They were nineteen in 2017.
They were the, they were more than half less than the other bids.
Yeah, fifty-eight or fifty-nine thousand was the top bidder back then. So, and three years on top of that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, to amend the existing contract with staff recommendation to prepare the preliminary engineering report as presented.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? The one comment that I will want to make is that the town will not just continue to grow, it's an impossibility. If, if there's not water and sewer capacity, there will not be any more houses that are built, regardless of, it's going to, like, it just, it, it's an impossibility. So this council, I, I, you know, one of the great things about having a five-person council is we're going to be able to make some of these big decisions. And, and I think this will help us to get the data that we need. All right, so we've got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Abstain? All right, you guys have it. All right, next we have ordinance oh one, twenty twenty-one, agriculture uses in planned business district, first reading.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, before we get into this, I, I just wanted to kind of talk about the policy for introducing ordinances and, and new business, right? So I know you guys went through in, in your introductory meeting, kind of talking about how, how things worked, right? And so, uh, this ordinance and the next ordinance that are coming up kind of went a little bit different. Typically, what we've done is if there's new business, new, new business is going to be discussed, it's typically going to be discussed during council roundtable to kind of give the, the, the council a heads up for next time, hey, we're not going to really get into this now, but we're going to, we'll talk about it in the future. And this ordinance had kind of been working in the background as well as the next ordinance going forward. So to respect kind of what we've been doing as a council, you know, I would say to the council, hey, if we want to wait and, and just kind of put this on the roundtable discussion, I will bring it up. I'm happy to sponsor and, and bring this, this ordinance forward. Obviously, no, you know, no ordinances are going to be coming if a council member's not going to sponsor them. So we can either use this as the first reading tonight, or if you want, we can hold it back and then I'll bring up that I want to bring an ordinance to the table and then we'll introduce it at our next meeting. So is there a consensus? Anybody care either way? I mean, I do think it's important that things are introduced, that, that council is given a kind of a heads up before things actually come. And, and so just a couple of quirky things about why these, you know, why these two came up, so.
I think in the case of these, I think it's, in my opinion anyway, perfectly fine to consider this a first reading.
Okay.
I think then in the future, we, you know, mention here at roundtable that we have something cooking and go from there, that makes sense to me at least.
Good, okay. All right, what I'm going to do is I'll read the, the top part here, and then Sharon, I'm going to ask you to kind of talk a little bit about, about the ordinance and the reason for it. Town Council of Centerville Ordinance Number, what is it number? Oh one, twenty twenty-one. An ordinance of the Town Council of Centerville amending the town of Centerville zoning ordinance, ordinance, which is chapter one seventy of the town code, to add agriculture as a permitted use, subject to limitations contained herein in the Planned Business District, PBD. All right, that's, that's submitting it for first reading, and Sharon, you can talk a little further.
Sure. So one of the businesses out in the Centerville Business Park is Green Thumb Industries, also GTI. And they have an existing processing facility out there with a limited amount of indoor growing associated with that processing facility. They want to expand and have more expansive indoor and outdoor growing. And so currently agriculture is not a permitted use in the Planned Business Development District. And so this ordinance that they prepared is to allow agriculture as a use out in that district. And so this was submitted by GTI and their attorney prepared this ordinance, although I have seen it and reviewed it, as well as other staff as well. So this, and I think that, I don't know if anyone from, I don't, I guess they don't have anyone here tonight, but they did, they will have someone available for future meetings to kind of explain a little bit more about what they want to do.
Okay, so one of the quirky things about our, our zoning code is when you annex property into the town, typically it's always been agricultural uses, right? If you look at, at even Northbrook, right? I mean, Northbrook was, was agriculture at one point. Uh, and so those, those uses are allowed to remain. So it's kind of one of these things that technically it's allowed, but we need to make sure, these guys want to make sure that it's, that it's in the books as an allowed use.
Apparently, maybe only the R one allows agriculture.
I believe so, R one, yeah.
And so, but it happens, obviously, in other zones, like you're saying. It's just, it's continued on from previous, before.
And there hadn't been any, any changes to the land really kind of made.
Right.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for this? Otherwise, we'll submit it for the record, we'll put it on the planning commission agenda for the next meeting, and then whenever the appropriate time is to hold a public hearing after that, we'll do that, okay? All right, moving forward, ordinance oh two, twenty twenty-one. You can stay there, Sharon, as well. Steve, do you want to read this one or?
Sure, yeah, you bet. So, uh, an ordinance of the Town Council of Centerville adopting a temporary moratorium on the issuance of permits for accessory structures in excess of four hundred square feet. So just work with, with Sharon to develop this. It was kind of in response to the fact, and this is reflected in the text, that the planning commission is currently working to revise accessory structure rules and codes and things of that nature. And it's springtime is coming, and I think there are going to be some requests to, uh, build some of these things, and in, in lieu of having that planning commission change done, this provides them a little bit of space to go ahead and make those changes, give us some time to review and approve. And just to be clear, this would not prevent anybody from building a shed or a reasonably sized garage, but it is a four hundred square foot, I guess that's a, that's a floor for these, because they do change the fabric of residential neighborhoods. And I think while the, I mean, while the planning commission gets this figured out, I would encourage, you know, folks to support this. If you have any questions about the way these things can change residential neighborhoods, I encourage you to stop by my house and I'll show you. So I'm excited about what the planning commission is thinking about, and, and I'm happy to have this in front of y'all.
I would like to add that, you know, much like many things in the zoning code, little tiny changes can have huge impacts, and it's really important that they get it right. And, and that means that it might take a little bit longer to get it right. I mean, we were at the planning commission last time, and then, you know, what we thought was a very simple conversation turned into extremely complicated, you know, details. And so I agree, I think it's, it's, you can still put a shed on, this is a pretty large building. It's at least a twenty by twenty building, which is pretty large. So I, I, you know, I, I think this is a good, kind of set, set the brakes for a little bit. What's the process with this, Sharon? This is a first reading, this is not an emergency ordinance, it's a first reading?
It is not structured as an emergency ordinance. Sometimes moratoriums do get passed that way. I don't know that you really have that concern with this because it does apply to anything that's pending when it, when it gets adopted. So I think you can go through your normal process, and you do it just like you do what a zoning text amendment.
So this would go before the planning commission too?
Yes, it should go to, refer to the planning commission, have your public hearing, same notice as you would for a zoning amendment.
Okay. Did anybody else have any questions on this?
I'd just like to, Jeff, do you have, I know you just put in a new garage. And, uh.
Well, I did.
And I, and I understand this moratorium and everything. I'd just like to, Jeff has the experience in, in his neighborhood, and how was it accepted by your neighbors or et cetera?
I haven't heard any complaints. Everybody likes the building, it's actually put, it's a nice building. But I think, I, like I said, I live in a different part of town. I don't live in Centerville Heights.
Right, right.
Building a building in Centerville Heights compared to where I live, I think is totally different. Or in the middle of town.
Right.
I'm, I'm in the town limits, but I consider my, my property the outskirts of town because I'm four houses from in-town limits.
Okay.
So, but there's, if you look at my street, there's one, two, four garages.
Right.
In excess of four hundred square feet.
And you have more acreage.
Yeah, and I have a bigger lot also.
And I know, in walking around the town, I, I would think there would be potential, I'll say, for some of the older, more tough, storage-type buildings to be replaced in the future because of their condition. I mean, you just walk down any street and there's some that looks like they're falling down.
Yeah.
So I think there might be, and I'm just saying that when ownership changes or something, that this might be a, a good thing to have on the books so that our planning commission and other entities can make sure we don't do something, I just like calling it stupid.
Sure.
So I agree that this is a good moratorium to do.
Just to build off Jeff's point, I mean, I think Jeff's has got some architectural detail that makes it look, you know, halfway pleasing, and I think those are the kinds of things that the planning commission is building, and including landscaping.
Yes.
Which is also, you know, I think going to be important, and so even if they're big buildings potentially, they'll be, they'll look a little better and they'll be covered up with some landscaping, so.
Thank you, Jeff.
And I got to plant more trees too. I got, I got a bunch of trees in my yard. I got a bunch of trees in my yard and I got to plant more trees, but I'm going to do it, so.
All right, thank you, appreciate that. We're going to, Carolyn, you'll do whatever you got to do to, okay. Next, we've got the tax set-off discussion, tax differential. Carolyn, do you have that prepared on the slide? All right, so, you know, with the new council here, there's a lot of new things everybody's getting into and I wanted to just very quickly go over the tax differential, payment in lieu of taxes, tax set-off, et cetera, a little bit of history about what that is and what it means. We've got a tax differential meeting coming up with the county at our COG meeting, I think in March. And so I think it's important that this new council really understands what it is and how it works. So the official definition is based in 6-306 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. It authorizes counties to grant a tax set-off for property within a municipal corporation. And it says, whereas tax set-off is defined as the difference between the general county property tax and the property tax rate that is set for assessments of property in a municipal corporation or a payment to a municipal corporation to aid in the municipal corporation in funding services or programs that are similar to the county services and program. So essentially, you know, when the town has a police force, the sheriff's department doesn't necessarily need to come here and support us all the time. Municipalities typically are going to be double taxed in that we're paying county taxes and we're paying town taxes. So that's essentially what the state article has. There are several counties within Maryland that are may counties and there are several counties within Maryland that are shall counties. The difference being that a shall county means that the county shall provide a set-off and a may county is, the county may provide a set-off. We are a may county. We have tried in the past to lobby for the change, but as of yet, we have not been able, been successful at that.
And is this something that we have to negotiate with the county or is this something our state representatives?
This, what we're talking about is with the county.
Right, but to change it from shall to may.
That is something at the state level that multiple municipalities would get together and lobby the state to make that.
So if we were.
We're not talking about that tonight.
I know, I understand. So, but that's something we need or should consider and talk about in the future.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think over the past several years, the state, the MML has tried to do that and gone to the state and it's never passed, so it's been.
As our representative, I can explore that with MML?
Yeah, I would talk to MML. I remember last year it was Ocean City, that was really big on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so history, we've got the next slide here, is that until FY 2015, the county provided a direct payment to the municipalities in the form of aid to towns. So back in those days, it wasn't really based on property tax set-off or duplication of services, it was aid to towns. It was basically an arbitrary calculation based on a pot of money and it was allocated directly to the towns based on population. County had some type of a formula, they decided, here's what the total amount is going to be. And the last time Centerville received this was FY 2014 and the amount was $134,468. Centerville is obviously the largest municipality in Queen Anne's County, so whatever the total number was, Centerville would get the overwhelming majority. There was no statutory basis for this grant and each spring the municipalities basically appealed before the commissioners to request this payment. When I first got on the council, I can remember I was the only one that was willing to go because the other council members were like, eh, you know, county's going to give you what they're going to give you and they're not going to be helpful. We've, since then, we've really built up a good relationship with county commissioners and with the county staff. So again, from FY 2010 to 2014, the payment was $134,000 per year. That's the equivalent of about two and a half cents on the property tax rate. If you take our total assessed value, it's around 500 million, 500 and some million dollars. Divide that down by a property tax rate, each penny is worth about $50,000. So 134,000 is about two and a half cents. And you can see that in the illustration below, what, you know, on our budget, what it, where it actually went through. So that was a cash payment to the town that we would then be able to use in our general fund in our budget. Moving on here. Next, Centerville is the county seat. So these properties that do not provide any property tax revenue, but they do consume municipal services. Part of the burden of being, the county seat is that we've got all these, but it's also part of, part of the charm of having, you know, all of this stuff is so close to us. So we've got the largest share of government taxes on properties. The list is here, I'm not going to go through all of them. But why does this matter? Queen Anne's County owns a significant amount of tax-exempt real property in the town limits as the county seat. Carolyn, can you go to the next slide? It's understandable, right? That's where all their business, that's part of being a county seat. So as of last year, the county's assessed value for property in town is $113 million. If there was, if they were not tax-exempt, their property tax burden would be $459,000. So if you think about it, that a property tax is based on the amount of services that you're consuming, based on the value of your property, the value of the services that they're consuming are $450,000, $459,000. And that equates to about 17% of all of the assessed real property in the town limits. So they do consume our services, they do use our infrastructure, but they do not pay any taxes. Next slide. So county ordinance number 13-28, several sets of commissioners ago worked with the town and when we really had the COG, it was going really well, we worked with the county and Commissioner Dunmire at the time put this forward and it passed unanimously. So basically, they passed an ordinance for the tax differential. This provided the opportunity for municipalities to plead their case. They actually put it in a statutory form and essentially what the town was saying is that we're providing services to the citizens that the county doesn't have to provide as opposed to just aid to services, here's an amount of money. And that the taxpayers are paying the county for these services in addition to paying the town. So little details about the ordinance tax set-off for municipal corporations, it was approved unanimously. That was a great thing, right? They all felt that municipalities were important. It codified a formal tax set-off, it defined the process for calculating the differential, it addressed the type of set-off for each municipality, and it provided the steps for each municipality needed to take, to request the tax set-off. That year, that very first year, the county gave the municipalities the option of whether they wanted the payment to be directed to the town budget, as they had done in the past, here's your check, or in a reduction in the county property tax rate. The only exception was Centerville. Commissioners decided that the entire amount would go to a reduced tax rate and none of the town's budget. We were not given a choice. Centerville was not given a choice. So that year, the value of the tax differential was approximately $272,000. The good news is that taxpayers in Centerville got a 5.4 cent reduction in their overall property taxes. The bad news is that we had $134,000 hole in the revenue side of our budget, right? Moving on. Now, if you guys have questions, you're welcome to ask them, otherwise we can have questions and answers at the end. All right, so the process, and we've got some spreadsheets that you guys have in front of us and we'll talk about it a little bit. Early in the calendar year, each municipality receives a spreadsheet from the county based on the services the county provides and the associated tax burden on each service. The municipality then presents its percentage of each service duplicated and justification for that service. Typically, the county finance department would meet with each municipality, we would talk through the duplicate services, and then the county would ultimately decide on the percentage in the differential. This year is a little bit different. I don't believe the county is having that individual one-off meeting, it's going to be taking place during the COG meeting. So what services are duplicated? Next slide, please, Carolyn. In our justification spreadsheet for FY 21, we cited the following duplicated services and the percentage that the town provides, which the county does not need to provide. So administration, legal services, for example, we've got our own attorney, budget finance, human resources, economic development. We cited economic development at 75%, which means that while we do have a funded economic development position and division, we also do rely on some of the county's funding to help us with that. Same thing with tourism. Sanitary district overhead, for example. Planning and zoning, 100%. So all of the planning and zoning decisions that are made are funded through the town, none of that comes from the county. Public works, for example, administration and engineering, all of these are 100%. General services, roads, weed control, solid waste, parks, 100%. Public landings and marinas, 100%. Sheriff's office, 100%. Volunteer fire companies, 50%. We, you know, as we had a couple of weeks ago, we made a presentation to the Goodwill Fire Department, we presented them with a check, an annual check of $45,000. So we do provide them, but the county also provides taxes, you know, revenue to go to the volunteer fire companies as well. And then Board of Elections, as an example, is, we said that that was 100%. All right, moving on, the county determination. So the spreadsheet is a little bit small to look at, but basically the county then decides on an amount in their budget for the tax set-off. So they say, here's what we're going to, here's what we think the entire set-off is going to be worth. And then they divide that amount by the municipalities. Some municipalities opt for a cash payment, some municipalities opt for a tax rate reduction. So for example, in FY 20, the town provided justification that we felt that our differential would be worth $1,056,168. The county then said, all right, we're going to give you 643,999. So there's always been a haircut. So the haircut is one of those ones where, well, you use county roads or you use parks and I believe that's kind of how they come up with that calculation. And I don't personally feel that that's the right way to go about it, but that's a discussion that we try to have with the county every single year. So remember, the county also has the option to not provide a tax set-off or a differential at all. But they have also provided what they call a hold harmless clause. So the hold harmless clause provides at least as much as in the previous year in the event that there's a lower assessed value. And it's kind of a good faith clause saying, we're going to give you guys at least, at least this much. So the results since the county approved the tax set-off ordinance. Each year, Centerville has requested more than the county has provided. Each year, the county has provided a differential to Centerville. Centerville has not asked to receive any cash payment as the differential, but has always received it in the form of a tax rate to decrease the Centerville property tax owners. So the tax rates, for example, FY 2014 started out, your county portion is 8471, so that's 84 cents per 100 of assessed value, okay? Last year in FY 2021, it's 7295. So it's gone down. Your tax burden as a percentage of the whole has gone down for property owners who are here in Centerville. So what are the effects? Because Centerville's never received any cash payment since the enactment of the tax set-off ordinance, we no longer receive any payment in lieu of taxes for county-owned properties. So the average was $134,000 prior to this legislation. If you were to look at it from the very beginning, since they stopped it, it would have been, so the deficit, the cumulative deficit is over $1 million. So that's in a million dollars that the town had been typically getting in the past that we have no longer, we no longer receive in our general fund and that our taxes have actually gone down. If the county paid property taxes on the county-owned tax-owned properties, that would be $459,000 in FY 21. The total property tax rate, the Queen Anne's County portion and the town of Centerville portion has gone down from 1.22, 1.2271 per 100 dollars of assessed value in 2014 to $1,134,521. So if you take a $300,000 assessed value property, I think the average is 289. So this is pretty close to the average. In FY 24, the Queen Anne's County rate was 8471, the town's rate was 38 cents per 100 for a total of 12271. So your total property taxes would be 3,681. Moving forward to FY 21, your total property taxes were $3,403. So that would be a savings of $277 that year based on this legislation, right? It's good legislation that the county has put in place, but I think we need to ask to tweak it a little bit. So over time, the tax burden on all Centerville property taxes has gone down, even with a town tax increase in the past. So just real quick, the numbers. So in FY 2021, Queen Anne's County's approved operating budget was $143,830,540. The differential provided to Centerville was 677,845. The differential represents 0.047%, so that's less than one-half of 1% of their entire budget, okay? Population, so Queen Anne's County population is about 50,000 people. Town of Centerville's population is about 5,000 people, so that's about 10% of all population live in Centerville. Take, Town of Centerville's daytime population increases to over 10,000 people daily if you take into account school, government, courts. Obviously with COVID, things are a little bit different, but that's a typical day. Assessments, so Centerville has 7% of the assessed value of all properties in Queen Anne's County. County budget comparison to Centerville differential, so we got $677,000 in a lowered tax equivalent last year. The economic development budget for Queen Anne's County is 679,000. So these are just some comparisons, right? New vehicles for the sheriff's department was $622,000 last year. The airport budget is $636,000. Golf course budget is 604,000.
We returned $677,000 to the Centerville taxpayers in fiscal year 20?
2021, correct. So the recommendation, and we've got the spreadsheet here, is that I think we should review the spreadsheet from previous years. I would recommend everybody, every council member speak to the town manager and/or the finance officer to understand the details of the duplicative services that we provide. Please attend the COG meeting on March 10th. There's going to be no individual meetings with Queen Anne's County Finance this year. Attend the county tax set-off meeting on March 23rd. That's going to be an opportunity for us as a council to present to the county commissioners, here's what we think we would like. It's a kind of a formal presentation. And then request the county, and this is coming from me, this is my opinion, request the county provide a portion of the tax set-off back to the town as a cash payment and a portion as a tax reduction. You know, over time, we've lost out on 100, over a million dollars worth of revenue. This budget, we need revenue, right? So I think that's a decision that the council should decide what portion should go in a tax decrease, right, the county? And then if there's a portion that the town should get as a cash payment. In an ideal world, they would provide 100% of the duplicative services in a reduction in taxes and then also provide us some aid in the form of offset for taxes because they do consume those services. So I'm happy to take any questions at this point.
Are they, have you explored, are they amenable to this cash payment plus tax reduction?
The council.
We currently have tax reduction.
Correct.
And we're proposing a new, something new, which is a hybrid.
I'm proposing that, it's not a council proposal as of yet.
I'm saying we, since you have developed this, and I think this is a very good presentation and getting all the facts on the table.
So in previous years, the council as a whole has always said it's going to be a full tax reduction.
Right.
I have had conversations as an individual with county commissioners who have said that they would be open to hearing, hearing the argument that we would like to get some cash and some reduction.
Yeah, okay. To me, sounds like pragmatic and sensible to possibly help us meet our needs, correct?
Correct. So we do also have a spreadsheet here that talks about what the tax revenues were for the county. That would then break it down, how much the cost is for each budget line item within the county. And then that would then translate to how many services does the town provide? So it's kind of small, we can get you this sent over tomorrow. But I think it's good for you, kind of on your own time, to look at, here's what the county spends on X, here's what the town spends on X, here's what the percentage is that we think is the amount that we're offsetting that. And then if you go to the second page, it talks about what the town is viewing as our percentage of those services. And then the final page is we have to send this letter, we have to send this description to the county and say, here's what we do, here's the justification for why we say that. So I would recommend over the next two weeks, have those conversations with the town manager, talk to the finance officer if need be, so you get a better understanding. Because I think at next meeting, we're going to want to come together as a council and say, here's the percentages that we want to go for and here's what we want to ask.
So this chart, the one that says municipality services provided by.
Correct.
This winds up with the county's budget. Is that what I'm hearing?
So yeah, so the second page is basically where you would insert it here on the first page. The first page just shows you historically, here's what we've asked for, here's what they've given us. Here's what we've asked for, here's what they've given us.
And the second page is the list of the items in the county budget.
Correct.
For which we say, legal services, we don't need the county. We have our legal.
Correct.
Which is 100%.
Yep.
I'm just making sure I understand.
Absolutely. So for example, take one golf course. Town does not operate a golf course, so all of the, all of the cost associated for running that golf course, everybody in the county is going to, should pay for that and the town doesn't have any duplicative services.
Good, very good, thank you. Good, very good, thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, let's move on to correspondence. I think we received a communication regarding a utility bill. Anybody wants to follow up on that? Next, we have reports of boards and commissions. Parks Advisory Board?
So the Parks Advisory Board was via Zoom this past Tuesday, and we had our closed session, so I was not able to attend the entire meeting. I'm waiting for the minutes to be sent to me, so I will do a full report on that in our next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Centerville Economic Development Authority, are there any updates there?
No, I think we can consider removing this as an item from the agenda moving forward.
Queen Anne's County Council of Governments, I don't think there's any updates there yet, are there?
Nope.
Okay, come on. Planning Commission, I don't have any updates either, we haven't met since our last meeting. We do have one that's coming up.
Maryland Municipal League, I have been talking with them regarding, and I've received information from them regarding, if you remember from the last meeting, I was looking into a dog park, not to be operated by us
Yeah.
But they have, just today, I received, in fact, examples of other dog park operations, how they were established in other municipalities in the state of Maryland.
That's great.
And other thing, I mentioned a few, I'll talk about that in the roundtable next.
Thank you for that report. Reports of the department heads, town manager.
Working on a capital budget, and been conducting some Zoom meetings on some development projects.
Okay. Chief of Police, anything else, Steve? Anybody have questions for him?
No.
All right, thank you. Chief?
Good evening. With the hire of our two recent police officers, including Dustin Schultz, tonight, our staffing, I'm pleased to report that our staffing is at the highest level since September of 2020. We have one remaining vacant position to fill at this time, which we hope to fill in very short order, and we are grateful for the support of the council. With the assistance of Carolyn Brinkley and Crystal Eball, we've been able to conduct multiple interviews for the Centerville Police Department Administrative Assistant position over the last week. We hope to finalize these interviews early next week and make a selection shortly thereafter. Regarding LEOPS, the application for a LEOPS actuary study was submitted. Supplemental information was requested by the Maryland State Retirement System and was provided to them. We're waiting for approval from the body to proceed with the next steps. On January 29th, I engaged in conversation with Greg Torcio from Torcio Architects. He's committed to evaluate and prepare recommendations for potential CPD wharf building Speed cameras, with school resuming in-person sessions in small groups, the safety of our children, staff, and visitors are paramount in our town. Our third ASC speed camera is to be deployed on or around February 17th, and I'll be sure to coordinate with Carolyn to make sure that public notices out. Traffic study's been completed for Route 213 at Y River Upper School, and the permit application to the Maryland State Highway Association Administration has been submitted for approval at that location. The end of month report for January 2021 will be made available at the next regular council meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
How about the parking study? Have you done anything on the parking study yet? Didn't we talk about that a few meetings ago, about the parking study?
Well, we had somebody, you know, talked, but I don't think we were gonna go forward with that at this point. I think that's gonna be one we're gonna look at putting in the budget this summer, right, for '22. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Anybody? Thanks.
Thank you.
Town Attorney?
Nothing at this time.
All right, Director Public Works? All right. Human Resources Manager has left, Finance Officer, not here, Town Clerk?
No.
Nothing? I do see our Economic Development Manager back there. Paige, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Mr., thank you.
Okay. Citizens Forum, I'll open it back up for Citizens Forum. Hearing none, we'll move on to council roundtable. Councilmember Anania?
I just had two things, one mostly a question for Steve. I had a couple people ask me recently if they see potholes or things like that, who they should call. I mean, is that Town Hall, is that, call KIP?
I mean, they can call Town Hall, and they certainly pass it on to KIP if they, you know, have KIP's phone numbers, he's certainly, you know, welcome to take the call direct.
Okay, perfect, I'll direct them there. And then the other question I was having, have we ever done any sort of volunteer days to like clean up any sort of trash along the trails or at any of our parks?
I mean, we have, I guess it's a couple organized groups that normally do it, out to Northbrook and a couple other locations. I can't say that it's been something that the town actually has their own group or own activity or sponsored day.
Okay.
But it's, we help in conjunction, you know, provide trucks and things like that to assist.
Okay.
There's, I forget the organization, but I know the Coors River Conservancy manages it, and it's like sometime in April or so, and there's several locations, and we bring our trucks out there, I mean, and it's unbelievable, the amount of stuff
Oh, okay, that's interesting.
That we get. In addition, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, they always have these service projects, and you could find them every once in a while. They were just at the wharf not too long ago, so if someone's looking to do that, I would say just, you know, go down there. If they're looking to have a town leave a truck, because they're gonna do a big one
Right.
Get in touch with KIP, and he'd be happy to put a truck out there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I know that when we go down in Northbrook, and we've done it there, those ponds, they fill up with all the old recycling stuff, and
Yeah.
Usually it's in the spring, the kids can go down and they can get frogs and stuff like that while they're picking up trash, so.
Okay, awesome, good to know.
Yep.
Yep, that's it.
Councilmember Keel?
Kudos to the Public Works Department for getting the water leak fixed in a snowstorm. I know it was rough on you, and also for the town crew, I know it wasn't a whole lot of snow, but the roads were clear. But thank you. And one other thing, is a property on my end of town, that a lot of people have been approaching me because it's entering the town, is the Wharton property. Is there anything that we can do about getting it cleaned up?
I'd recommend having, you know, having an offline conversation with Steve.
We've had contacted the property owners in the past, we have not recently, since the owner had passed away, but we
Wharton did that one?
Yeah, yeah, so we, yes, we can still follow up and
Okay, I forgot to mention that to you, but, yes, okay, that's the only two things I had.
Okay. Councilmember Hardy?
I mentioned last meeting about the basketball court at Millstream, and in a kind of an unofficial meeting with the Director of Parks and Rec of the county on another subject, she volunteered that, when I mentioned about the idea, that she is going to visit the basketball court and give a professional opinion on an estimate cost for backboards, rims, and for looking at the condition of the court itself, like painting the stripes. And so, once we get that, it could be a plausible town-county partnership. Also, in walking around the town, we might, a couple of business owners might wanna help sponsor that event of getting those, that court fixed up. And I think it would be good for the town, good for the community at that end of town, and it could be a very good situation that maybe come this spring, we'll, I'm just proceeding with that. I have one thought for KIP about the lights and every electricity down at the wharf. Is there, the contract has been awarded, correct? Is there a estimated time of completion?
They're trying to work it together with the
He's not gonna do it, he can't do it.
I'm sorry.
I know people will be asking, because they've seen it in the minutes.
Yes, and the contract's been awarded, we're trying to get the contractor that's doing the electric and everything to also work with the contractor that's redecking the wharf down there, so that'll make it easier on one working with the other, so. With regards to your discussion about the basketball court, I'm gonna ask you to get in touch with Mike Whitehill. There was discussion at the Parks Board meeting the other night about the same thing.
That's fine. I just, I was talking with Ms. Brooks about just a county thing that I was interested in, and then I just broached the subject. So no, I will definitely talk to Mike, and I'd get some information, which I think would be a wonderful project for the Parks Advisory Board to improve one of our parks.
Great, all right, anything else?
No, that's it.
I just have one thing, as Steve had mentioned, he was looking at some development projects or development inquiries. We do have, Carter Farm has the, I'm not gonna say the ownership, but the rights to develop has moved on, and they're interested in a development proposal. So one of the things that, this is kind of the catalyst, the next meeting, I'd like to make a presentation to the council on, that entire property is in the critical area. It's also zoned as an, as a LDA, right? LDA, which means limited development area. Any development that occurs there would cause it to move into an IDA, which is an intensely developed area, and there are some regulatory hurdles and some bars that they would have to cross in order for them to be able to do that. So I'd like to put a presentation together to talk about what the critical areas is, how it works in terms of going from a LDA to an IDA. And then part of the mechanism, the legal mechanism for doing that would be through a development rights and responsibilities agreement, a DRA. So maybe Sharon, you could kinda talk a little bit next time about what a DRA is, what the difference is between a DRA and a PWA, Public Works Agreement, why we would wanna have a DRA for this? And then we could kinda talk a little about what are some of the things that was in the previous application when the previous applicant came, because that did actually go all the way up to the Critical Areas Commission, and it was approved by them. And so I think it's gonna be important that this council puts its stamp on what we think is important, you know, what we don't necessarily care about, and going forward. So I'll be doing that at the next council meeting. Carolyn, can you present, and I can get this to an email tomorrow, I think it's Ordinance 02-2015, which was the Carter Farm Critical Area Ordinance? That lists kind of our finding of fact, and also what our requirements were going to be for a DRA, and then the DRA ordinance, and then we could also talk about the TND, how we changed the zoning there from a typical, I think it was R2 to a
It was R1, I think.
R1, excuse me, R1 to a TND.
Did you, the first one, did you say 02-2015?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And you want the Critical Area Approval?
That was the Critical Area Approval one, yeah, for Carter Farm, correct.
02-2015?
It's a pretty interesting thing, and it was a pretty neat thing to go through, so it'll be, it'll be an interesting, kind of big picture project for us to look at.
It would also interface with Mike Whitehill's big picture of a trail.
That's a big part of it, yep.
Yep.
Absolutely.
And I think, having been on the Parks Advisory Board, Mike has, I believe, a very good vision of that.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there any, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.